Good evening. The time is now seven oh two. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, August 11, 2025, will please come to order. Will the clerk please call the role?
Heidi Cader is absent. Sheila Pryor here. Sarah Johansson?
Here.
Haris Bende?
Here.
Valentina Ayers?
Here.
Dan Janestra?
Here.
Millen Sahoni?
Present.
Chase Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Let's all rise to recite the Pleasure of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands for the nation, our God, and to this world with the victory which is for us all.
He said, "Make it a great day."
What happened? What happened?
He said, "Make it a great day," because that's what they say at school every day.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Make it a great day. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming and attending this school board meeting. If you wish to speak during the audience opportunity to address the board, please fill out a form placed in the back of the room and hand it over to our district admin assistant, Amy sitting to my right. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials on board book. The recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, will the clerk please take a roll? Call vote.
Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Haris Bende?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Cader is absent. Millen Sahoni?
Yes, we have an agenda. Thank you, Sheila. The next item on the agenda is recognitions, and I will now join Dr. Anderson at this podium this evening.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our school board meeting. Thanks for being here with us tonight. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for the school district, and it's always by great honor to convene the recognitions portion of our monthly school board meetings. So again, welcome. And we have three recognitions this evening, two for Employees of the Month and one to recognize those who have announced their intent to retire. So at this time, I would like to invite our two Employees of the Month, please come forward, Steph Weekly and Anna Heatland. Congratulations. So to start, I'm going to read the script that was presented to us on their behalf, some very kind words and clearly deserving of Employees of the Month. So congratulations and thanks for being here. The Student Support Services is incredibly proud and excited to honor Steph Weekly and Anna Heatland as the August Employees of the Month. Our first August Employee of the Month is Special Education Coordinator Steph Weekly. Steph is an educator of all learners in our district, and we deeply appreciate her longstanding service as a coach, teacher, and leader. For the past five years as a special education coordinator, she has grounded every single decision in a student-centered approach. Steph's famous can and will do spirit is evident everywhere, from our classrooms to the lacrosse fields and hockey rinks. She is a relentless advocate for consistently, who consistently brainstorming new ways to serve everyone, and her collaborative leadership provides trustworthy guidance during the most challenging situations. Her humor and passion elevate the work and we're able to do together on behalf of our students. Steph's contributions are centered on her commitment to student and teacher success and her ability to foster a positive, inclusive school culture. She is always putting the needs of students first while ensuring staff's success by anticipating challenges and responding with thoughtful, solution-focused care. She builds strong compassionate relationships with students, staff, and families, bridging gaps and leading with integrity. As a valued resource and mentor, she makes a point to be visible in her support for others, bringing a calm and encouraging demeanor to every single interaction. Her colleagues shared the following thoughts, and this is specifically from the principal, Sarah Beth and I. Steph has a deep understanding of both the staff and the unique demands of each individual she supports. Her connection with students is particularly noteworthy. She ensures they feel seen, heard, and valued. Her ability to balance responsiveness with leadership is admirable. And this comes from Ross Williams. Steph is a pleasure to work with in her role as our coordinator. She is an excellent communicator, always supportive, and never afraid to help staff, students, and families in any way she can. We know she is grounded in a student-first solutions. A heartfelt congratulations to Steph. Your presence sets a positive and collaborative tone in support of our students, staff, and entire community. Please join me in congratulating Steph. And you may now take the mic and share a few thoughts if you'd like.
Yes. Take out my notes. Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson and School Board, for the recognition. Thank you so much to the Special Education Leadership Team for the nomination. My heart is exploding. Thank you so much. I throw out a huge thank you to Jerry Johnson. She's not here, but she's, you know, she is my right hand. She's my mentor, friend, and partner in this work. I couldn't do my job without her. And I just have to say, I love my teams and I love my principals. And anybody that asks me about my job, I will tell them, I love my job because of my teams, and I love my job because of my principals and the buildings that I work in. They are truly incredible, and I look forward to every day coming to work. I love this community, and anybody that knows me knows this. I come to work almost every day with a Wayzata shirt on. It usually says Wayzata Lacrosse, but it usually has something to do with Wayzata. I own three pairs of blue and gold shoes, which I've gotten lots of people to buy. So Wayzata has my whole heart for many reasons. It's where I started my teaching career. It's where my children attend school. I coach both hockey and lacrosse within the community, so I'm super interconnected with a lot of the athletes. My kids play sports, and obviously, we live in this community, and I have a neighborhood of Wayzata families. I love this district, and I will always say that, and I will always support it. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work here. It's been wonderful, and I can't wait to see where it goes.
Realizing I'm going to have to up my game in my shoes. I wear black or brown every day. Those are my two choices, but anyway. Our next recognition is for Anna Heatland from our Students Support Services Department as well. Anna is a true rock star and the cornerstone of our multilingual team. Her dedication and impact on our staff, students, and families are evident in everything she does. Anna consistently works to better serve everyone, bringing her humor, passion, and expertise to every space she is in. It's clear that her commitment to her students and colleagues is not just a job, it's a calling. Her colleagues describe her as a powerful force for good, and this came from Rob Remington. Anna is a hardworking and caring advocate for her students and their families. Her ability to connect with students in both the self-contained class and co-taught classes helps students feel welcome and confident in their learning. Additionally, Anna is an integral member of our staff who consistently makes positive contributions to the Central Middle School community. Becca DeVolus shared the following. Anna's commitment to putting students and families first is a priority. At the middle school level, Anna has played a vital role in strengthening our program through her leadership in co-teaching and her dedication to supporting colleagues on best practices for multilingual learners. Her passion and professionalism have made a lasting impact on our school community. We're incredibly grateful for all that Anna brings to our team. Anna's leadership within the multilingual team is exemplary. She serves as a mentor, coach, and partner to our new staff, generously sharing her knowledge and fostering a supportive environment that helps new educators thrive. As a tireless advocate and a leader of co-teaching, she consistently partners with all teachers to ensure they have the tools and strategies needed to support every student. This collaborative spirit not only strengthens our teaching community, but also directly improves instructional practices and student outcomes. We're immensely grateful for Anna's leadership and dedication to her students and their families. Congratulations to Anna for being named an August Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and the entire school board, and thank you for writing such a kind and thoughtful recommendation. It is such an honor to stand here tonight and receive this award. Working for Wayzata has been an amazing journey. In my almost nine years in the district, I have met some amazing mentors, colleagues, and lifelong friends who have shaped me into the person I am today. Without mentors like Jen Ivers and Lucia Gardner, I would not be here today. There is such strength in having the community of people to learn from and lean on when things get tough, and these two women have shaped me into the multilingual teacher I am today. I am forever grateful for their support and encouragement. My role as a multilingual teacher is many parts, including having the privilege to empower students, collaborate with staff, and learn from and with families, which are some of the many reasons why I love my job. There is something so special about being to guide and accompany and encourage multilingual learners and their families as they navigate new countries, systems, and schools. Each and every day, they show up brave and full of grit while bringing a wealth of knowledge to us that they get to share with the entire community. It is truly inspiring. It is because of them that I get to do this work and why I continue to advocate for the ways to fully celebrate them and help them grow in their English skills. I wholeheartedly believe all students can succeed at grade-level content standards, regardless of their language background. As a result, creating systems to support all learners and collaborating with my colleagues and various teams of teachers, their co-teaching, collaborating, working with my PLC and co-planning are the best ways I know how. It truly takes a community like Central Middle School to make this possible. Work like this is not done in isolation and by definition is collaborative. So I can't accept this award without also acknowledging my amazing co-teachers, both Audrey Ryberg and Jill Johnson, who trust me to teach alongside of them as a team, graciously share their classrooms, learn and grow alongside me every day, and my PLC members across the years, including Mariah Schwakie, Lisa Blackenberg, Nahid Hussain, Ashley Anderson, Lucia Gardner, and Becca DeVolus, who have been the amazing pleasure to partnership with over the years, and the entire Central Middle School staff, who welcomed me eight years ago as the first EL teacher ever and who have helped me become the teacher I am today. I am deeply humbled to be able to work alongside such amazing educators. Thank you.
And our final recognition for the evening, and I haven't spotted either of these two individuals here, but two individuals have indicated their intent to retire, both having served thirty-two years in the district. First one is Kristen Baldwin, teacher at Plymouth Creek Elementary, and Michelle Howe, who is a teacher in our Wayzata Transition Program. Congratulations to both of them and thank them for their service to the district. And if you join me in a round of applause for them, I would appreciate it. And if you join me in a round of applause for them, I would appreciate it. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thanks again for being here with us.
Congratulations to the honorees and thank you, Dr. Anderson. Moving on. The Student Support Services Department in Wayzata oversees a wide variety of programs to ensure that all students receive the support needed to reach their full academic potential. This evening, Director of Student Support Services Ginny Niasse will provide an update to the board. Ginny?
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the Board and Superintendent Anderson. Thank you for the opportunity to share a look into our part of our community, the Student Support Services Department. Tonight, I, our team, our students and our families will share how our work of fostering environments of inclusion and independence are having a positive impact on the student experience aligned with our district goals and ensure that each and every student thrives. We're gonna get this. Our district mission is to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today, excel tomorrow, in an ever-changing global society. Our work is deeply connected to the district's mission to prepare every student for an ever-changing global society. Tonight, you will hear firsthand how the priorities of including and independence are creating empathetic and aware global citizens throughout their years experiencing a world-class education. A part of creating a world-class education is our Portrait of a Wayzata Graduate. That Portrait of a Wayzata Graduate outlines key skills and attributes such as believing in their ability to succeed, communicating effectively, valuing diversity and inclusion, and demonstrating learning agility and resilience. The Student Support Services Department plays a crucial role in helping all students develop these skills so they can reach their full potential. We support an exceptional educational experience for learners birth through graduation and our learners of graduation ages 17 to 22. We are a multifaceted department dedicated to teaching, learning, and coaching to ensure that students have all they need to equitably participate in learning. We are centered around students and support of their ability to access a world-class education. And at the heart of our mission... And at the heart of our mission... Wow, what's going on? Sorry, excuse me. Oh, thank you. I was like, what is... Well, thank you, Amy. Appreciate you. At the heart of our mission to ensure a world-class education for every student is our talented, responsive, and passionate Student Support Services Team. We are a unified team who are invested in fostering independence and inclusion for all learners on their unique path to graduation. The department is one of many villages and is composed of specialized experts. Our special education and related service teams provide the specialized instruction and tools that empower students with diverse learning needs to become confident, capable members of our school community. Our multilingual staff serves as a critical bridge, ensuring our English learners not only acquire essential language skills but are fully included in the vibrant life of our schools and prepared to thrive today and excel tomorrow. The underpinning of all this are our dedicated health and mental health teams. They provide the essential foundation for learning, ensuring our students are healthy, safe, emotionally resilient, so they can be present and engaged in the classroom. Each of these teams is bound by a singular unified mission to provide the services and support that foster true independence and inclusion for each and every student every day. Our integrated approach ensures that every student, regardless of their unique path, has the support they need to confidently walk across that stage and into a future full of possibilities. The strength of our department lies in our dedicated staff. This list highlights the diverse expertise we have, from special education teachers and school psychologists to licensed school nurses and speech pathologists. Our teachers and staff are the heart of our mission, working tirelessly to meet the unique needs of each student and build a truly inclusive environment. These staff are all working to make the portrait of a graduate tangible and achievable for each and every student. We believe that providing students with the right support helps them develop a sense of belonging, which in turn fosters their independence and prepares them for success beyond the classroom. Some of the work that we are very proud of across our schools is our unified status and partnership with Minnesota Special Olympics. Special Education Supervisor Amy Van Dunk will share more about our unified opportunities across the district.
Hello, everyone. When we were putting this together and Ginny asked what I want to present, and I'm like, unified. It's what gives me joy. I love being with the students and I love seeing the smiles on their faces. And if you can look at the pictures that are presented on this slide, there are a variety of different activities that we have grown over the years. We started maybe 10 years ago or so, we're trying to remember historically, when unified physical education started, and we landed on about 10 years ago. Since then, it has grown tremendously. And it's like every year, another club or committee or teacher is asking, how can I make my program unified? And so we have the Unified Track and Field, which is going into, I think, our fourth year this spring. We have the newest activity, the Cornhole Competition, in which we went to Edina School District and had a competition with students from their district. And our Unified Theater, which is something you will see smiles and claps and happiness every time you watch the students up on the stage. This year, we had a middle school winter festival. And it wasn't just the students that shared how excited they were or that we saw on their faces, but it was the families and their parents seeing their kids interacting and laughing and dancing in an activity that is a pretty typical school event for middle school. Although they didn't stand on the outer edge of the dance floor, they were actually in the dance. So we're gonna continue to grow our unified program. And the activities that students bring to us at West Middle School, we have approximately 200 students who volunteer to be a part of all unified activities across the school day. So it's a pretty incredible experience. One of our students I talked to this summer, and she said, "The reason I do it is because I get so much joy. I make so many new friends, and it makes me feel like I'm a better person." And I think that speaks volumes for why we want unified and to continue to have those activities for everyone. Next slide, I think we have a young man who happens to be one of our employees of the month's son. Ben Weekly was interviewed, and he participates in the Unified Experience at the high school. So go ahead.
My name is Ben Weekly and I'm an upcoming senior. I'm also a board member for Unified Club. I participate in the different unified classes offered at Wayzata, and I'm excited to speak on my experience. I can't say that I ever had a bad day in a unified class. This year, I was part of the Unified Theater. I am not usually a big drama participant, but I really did enjoy this one. One of the many friends I got to meet through this class was Ronic. Ronic is a man of many jokes and we shared plenty throughout the semester. I learned a lot from these classes. I learned how to build relationships with people outside my inner circle. I also learned how to communicate with students of all different capacities and I learned how to read social cues with both verbal and nonverbal students. All these skills I learned helped me become better friends with people like Ronic. In return, he has led me and many of my other classmates to support them at their Lakers game, which is our adapted sports team, just like how they come and watch us play. I really enjoyed these classes and I will 100% continue to take them throughout my last year. Thank you for listening. Have a nice night.
And a note from a parent who shared after she brought her son to our winter festival. She shared, "I wanted to send a note that the Wayzata Middle School Special Ed Team having a winter festival this year was absolutely wonderful. It really touched our family and me personally that the school district is going above and beyond to make these kids feel special. Thank you so much for all your hard work. I just wanted to send a note to recognize such a positive activity and its great impact." So, thank you. And we'll introduce Alana Walsh, one of our other supervisors in the Special Ed Department.
So thank you for sharing about something we're all passionate about and the unified. As Amy said, I'm Alana Walsh. I'm the Special Services Supervisor, both of our elementary and our transition program. So, as you've heard, we work to be responsive to the student needs and what we hear in needs in our WPS community. So in response to those student voices and community needs, times like my time at middle schools have been guided by that student-centered experience with flexibility to do interest-based learning. Students at West Middle School advocated to learn sign language. So the American Sign Language interpreter and the Unified DAP teacher responded by offering a my time session. It filled up so quickly that many more students were asked to enroll after it filled up and they couldn't, so over 65 students took that session. And what was really cool in that experience is a student who primarily uses ASL for communication jumped in, helped lead that session too with their peers. We hope to offer more of those events this coming school year. Another need that was identified in our elementary schools was lost and found items. And so, transition students, who are students 18 through 22 years old, go to the elementary schools and they collect lost and found items throughout the school year as a job site. Then in collaboration with the Early Learning School, Transition opened a new clothing closet, which aims to address the essential needs of our district's youngest students and their families by providing access to free, quality clothing, diapers, and formula. The Trojan Care Closet is open two days a week, every other week, and staffed exclusively by students at Wayzata Transition. Transition students are practicing their customer service skills through teamwork, stocking, organizing, creating the visuals to create a smooth shopping experience. This partnership is one of many examples of staff and students being responsive and passionate. And while I've shared two examples of how our staff are responsive, I want to highlight just how incredibly passionate we are. We're passionate about learning, about teaching, and our students and our community. So on the next slide, you'll see some additional examples of our students in our community. Both our Augmented Communications Specialist and our Assistive Technology Specialist shared their experience using eye-gaze technology in our schools at a statewide event featuring Minnesota practitioners who lead the field in low-incidence practices. The Wayzata Education Fund provided many grants to a variety of special services staff to support innovation, excellence, and our district's evolving needs. During the last previous school year, five grants were awarded totaling over $30,000. And topics included adaptive equipment for career and technical education class, assistive technology to support students with complex communication and physical needs, playground communication boards, and swell form machines for visually impaired students. We have done co-teaching, launched first at Wayzata High School, and now it's a cornerstone of our middle school redesign in all of our ELA and math courses. And that's been proven to be a powerful way to support students in inclusive environments by providing individualized support, fostering academic achievement, and ensuring students access learning in their general education classrooms. Those are just some of the ways that we've shown up, and I'm gonna give it back to Ginny.
So we... We are a number of things, and we also support literacy. Our work is teaching and learning. Our work is to prioritize academic excellence for each and every student, which includes a commitment to student growth at all levels to demonstrate progress in the reduction of student opportunity and the achievement gap. In pursuit of academic excellence for all, our focus is on students who receive English Language or Special Education Services and score in the high or some-risk range on the A-reading or early reading fall assessments, and that those students will make aggressive growth from fall to spring. This focus closely matches our school's individual growth plans, and it's intentional because we are all in this work together as partners. Our students who are at risk in the fall need the most over the course of the year. These are the students who need our services to help them make more than one year's growth over the course of a school year. As you can see, students are making aggressive growth. We strive along our partners and teaching and learning and our schools to have a greater impact in teaching and knowing what is making the difference for our learners. As a system, we are continuing to improve how we use data so that we can better identify the barriers that students are experiencing to show growth. This is a summary of the data, and we have work to do. Our system-wide work in the area of MTSS and PLCs are the cornerstones to more aggressively move the needle and address the opportunity and achievement gaps. We are Student Support Services, and we support many areas that positively impact the learning across our schools. Sarah Stack, supervisor at Wayzata High School, will share more about who those students are.
Thank you, Ginny. Thank you, Board, for hearing about our wonderful programming. I'm privileged to share a little more about who make up our district's population of Special Education Services. So on the next slide, Special Education Services are provided once a student qualifies through an educational evaluation having one or more educational disabilities. There are 13 recognized disabilities in the state of Minnesota, and Wayzata Public Schools provides services to students reflecting all disability areas. The next slide will show our district's disability demographics. And so as you can see on the slides, we had to use acronyms, which are something that we use a lot of. But this slide is representative of the primary disabilities. Students can qualify for more than one, so the primary disability is the one that we sort of lead with. The disability categories most frequently served across the district are speech-language impairments, which is SLI, autism spectrum, AST, and specialized learning disabilities, which is SLD. And together, these three disability areas make up almost 60% of the students that we serve. Low-incidence services are those with fewer students and allow the opportunity for the most creative in developing in their instruction and supports. These areas of service make up about 1.2% of our students, and they include deaf, blind, visually impaired, and severely, multiply impaired. An example of this is a student who is visually impacted. A small sample of the services a student would receive include learning braille, the ability to navigate spaces with orientation and mobility, and support to access general education classes throughout the schools. All of the special education providers foster and build towards student independence as a goal for all students is to be as independent as possible. On the next slide, this is a demonstration of, in the past 10 years, students who have educational disability in our district have almost doubled. This slide demonstrates growth over time and illustrates the changing demographics and needs of our student population. As you can see, the students served in this district have increased since the pandemic, and the bold line between 2019 and 2020 creates a visual of our district before and after the pandemic, and there has been significant growth in the last five years. One point of interest about the students who receive Special Education Services is that 6.5% of the students who receive Special Education Services are also identified as English language learners. And Becca DeVollis, our multilingual coordinator, will share more.
Thank you for having me here tonight to talk a little bit about our multilingual learners. My name's Becca DeVollis. I'm the multilingual coordinator. I'm the multilingual coordinator for the district. On the next slide, you'll see just kind of some growth patterns over the last couple of years. Our knowledgeable and skilled multilingual team has been a crucial asset as our English language learner population has grown significantly. Over the past three years, we've seen an increase of 81 students, with our team serving a total of 713 students in the spring of 2025. In direct response to this increase, we strategically expanded our staffing to provide more robust support. This investment has had a system-wide positive impact. The staffing increases have enabled more opportunities for co-teaching across all levels and provided general education teachers with enhanced support in differentiating instructional materials. The positive outcomes are clear, and we've seen remarkable progress. One example, at CMS, 83% of students in the co-taught English Language Arts class that were identified as high-risk made aggressive growth on their fast assessments. Additionally, this past year, 132 students successfully demonstrated proficiency on their annual yearly test, leading to 18% of our EL students exiting from service. This is a testament to the dedication of our team and the effectiveness of our collaborative approach. On the next slide, you'll see kind of where they started for the last three years. So, in the past three years, Wayzata Public Schools has had more students entering the district at lower-level language proficiencies. Many of these students are new to the country as well. Students with lower proficiencies in English require additional resources, support, and collaboration. Co-teaching and collaboration with general and special education teachers support the social and academic language growth in our students. In 2025, 78 students moved from the lower-level proficiencies of 1 and 2 to the higher proficiencies of levels 3 and 4. These are celebrations we are all proud of. Thank you. Mental health.
I guess it's just me, sorry. So, in our district, we have mental health and co-located services. And to make all this amazing work happen with our students, partnerships with families and community providers is essential. In 2021, the University of Minnesota shared in a news brief that approximately 1 in 5 U.S. adolescents had a major depressive disorder, and that fewer than half those adolescents who needed treatment were able to access treatment services. As a district, we have expanded our social, emotional, and mental health supports in our schools by adding school counselors and deans in addition to our school's social workers. While schools are well-supported, there are needs that continue to go unmet. That is where our community partners come in. Co-located services bring community-based mental health professionals into our school buildings, which increases access to mental health services by removing barriers like cost, transportation, and stigma associated with traditional clinic settings, particularly effective in reaching children who have never accessed mental health services before and support students from early childhood through transition. These providers operate in collaboration with building school social workers and our counselors. Wayzata Public Schools partners with the Relate Counseling Center, a nonprofit, community-based organization located in Minnetonka. Co-located services are funded by grant dollars from Partners in Health Kids Medicaid and billing private insurance. Another community partner is Growing Through Grief, which is funded by the Park Nicollet Foundation. Growing Through Grief is a school-based grief support and crisis management program for early childhood to transition students who have experienced the death of a loved one. This is available to our families and students at no cost. Individual and weekly peer grief support groups are provided, crisis response support to our schools, community following a death of a student or staff member, grief education and training for school staff and families. I'm going to pass this over to Jean to share more about our services.
Well, hello. I'm Jean Parsons. I'm the Health Services Supervisor. So, thank you, Amy, very much. Hello, everybody. So, our Health Services Team is the first point of contact for many students and families. With 15 health offices, we have had over 80,000 visits this year, student visits, to our Health Services Department. This demonstrates the vital role our Health Services Staff play in keeping our students healthy and ready to learn. Our Health Services Team collaborates with educational and support services within school and the community to promote student health for student achievement. And so, next slide, and then the next one, we're going to talk about 504. So, Section 504 Rehabilitation Act of 1973 ensures students with disabilities have barriers to learning removed to access their education. We are committed to providing a free and appropriate public education to all students. So, we currently support 440 students with active 504 plans, which is approximately 3.4% of our student population. This service provides important accommodations that allow students to be successful in the general education setting. While the percentage of students on 504 plans is small compared to those with individual education plans, which nationally, 3.4% of 504s compared to 15% on IEPs, but at Wayzata Public Schools, we have about 3.4% of our students supported by 504s.
This is where all of these pieces and all of the support services you've heard about to come together. Tonight, I have the privilege to introduce you to Ryan, Jessica, and Everett Waichi. Everett is a proud and absolutely awesome third grader at Oakwood Elementary. He and his family are going to share their family's journey with inclusion and our buildings and their experience over the years in our schools.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Waichi. This is my wife Jessica and our son Everett. Thank you for letting us come speak this evening. As you can tell, maybe by the gray my beard, Everett is the youngest of our four children. We have three older boys in our family, so we are certainly not new to the Wayzata District. Our oldest graduated in 2017. He is currently an architect living in Minneapolis, graduated from the University of Nebraska. Our second-oldest child is currently a rising junior, also at the University of Nebraska, and is currently a poli sci major. And our third kiddo is a rising junior at high school here in Wayzata. So, very well-versed within the district. I will tell you guys tonight, the mission statement that you put up there, you've hit it out of the park so far with our first two kids, for sure, of being completely ready for college. Our oldest is employed, doesn't live in our basement anymore, so you've done an amazing job, and I can't thank all of you enough for that mission statement because you're killing it. So, Everett was born in 2017 with a condition called arthrogryposis multiplex congenita. I will apologize, I'm the crier in the family, and I get a little emotional. You can see up on the screen, that's what Everett showed up in the world like. 20% of kids born with AMC don't survive the first year. So, we're very thrilled and thankful to where Everett is at today. Everett spent 132 days in the NICU before we were able to bring him home. When we brought him home, we came home with 20 hours a day of nursing care to help take care of Everett because of all of the equipment and things that he brought home with him to keep him alive. So, it's been a journey, to say the least. We've basically been, you know, the moment we got home, we're in survival mode. We didn't know what to expect, and school was one of the last things on our mind because it just, it doesn't enter your mind as a parent of a special-needs kiddo that you're ever going to get there. So, but our experience with Wayzata from day one has been amazing. The staff has reached out to us, even starting in COVID years, of doing online schooling and online preschool and things like that to get Everett engaged, to, you know, kick down the door, what does he need? How do we get him engaged? Things that we never thought possible as parents. So, certainly, we're as thankful as could be for everything that's been given to Everett and preparing him for the third grade that he'll be starting this fall.
Hi, thank you for having us. We just want to reiterate how extremely grateful we are for the expertise of all those people that you saw on the list that make up this department, everything from the therapist, the physical occupational speech therapy, to the special ed teachers, to the AAC. I mean, everything, that expertise that we don't have. And I actually am a speech pathologist, but I will say, when it's your own child, everything's out the window. Like, I don't think logically when it's my kid, so for me to be a speech therapist to him, uh-uh, that's not going to work. But this amazing group of people with their expertise has introduced us to things that we would have never known about. One of the most amazing things from this past year is that he uses his AAC device, and it plugs into a Chromebook, and he can type. He sent, I got an email one day that said, "Hi, Mom." I'm like, wow, that was pretty awesome. So, he... He's a ham. So, that was one example just of the expertise that, you know, has been brought to us. Another thing that is really important is sometimes, as the parents, we're a little hesitant to try new things, and this team has given us a gentle encouragement to really trust them and to trust Everett. And an example of this is this power chair that you see that he's been rowing around in. You know, he's only had it like two years, and before that, we pushed him in a manual chair, and I was scared to death that he was going to kill another child. Like, it is 350 pounds, and it can go fast, and, you know, accidents happen. He's seven, eight years old, and I was scared to death. And the PT and the team just assured me that he's ready, he can do it, and it's going to change his life, and they were right. It absolutely has. So, we just really appreciate that Wayzata has acknowledged and supported just that wide variety of team members needed to help a student like Everett be successful. And I think I want to touch on just really quickly, not only do you acknowledge and allow all these positions to be, you fill them with really amazing human beings. And to me, that just means the world. A couple really touching examples, aside from the fact that we have like a fan group back here, which we so appreciate that so many members of his team came here to support him and us. But one of our many hospitalizations, the dean of students brought our family a home-cooked meal when we got out of the hospital. That was amazing. Last summer, Everett had a lemonade stand. Lo and behold, a few of the staff came by our lemonade stand. And just this past May, at Everett's eighth birthday, unbeknownst to us, he'd invited half the school to come to Culvers, and they did. So, we super appreciate that all these people showed up to Culvers on a Saturday. And please know that we recognize this is above and beyond their job description, and it does not go unnoticed. Everett feels that everybody at school is his friend, and we see that lived out. To close, whenever it was born, I remember thinking, man, I hope my kid can walk. You know, that would be great if he could walk. Everett's not going to walk. Then I thought, it would be really awesome if Everett could use his arms because to brush his teeth, to feed himself, to comb his hair, Everett can't use his arms. I thought, maybe Everett will get to eat and enjoy food like we all do. Everett primarily gets his nutrition through a tube feed. And finally, I settled on, I hope that Everett is happy and knows that he's loved, and this Wayzata family has contributed to this as much as we have at home, and I truly believe he knows he is loved and he is happy. So, thank you very much. And Everett has a very brief statement that we've practiced, so it won't go rogue.
Why don't you just read what we wrote? We have created independence. It's fantastic. Just doing our job. As we conclude, I want to bring us back to our core purpose, ensuring every student has support they need to become a successful Wayzata graduate. The image you see here, Everett's portrait of a future Wayzata graduate, is more than just a picture. As you can see, it's a living testament to our mission and the collaborative spirit that drives success for every learner. It powerfully summarizes our belief that we are a unified community for all. The village it takes to fulfill the portrait of a graduate varies in size for each student. While some students may have a smaller team, others, like Everett, have a larger community of support. This graphic shows his team, the very people who are supporting to make his portrait a reality. Every bullet point you see represents a support services provider, a teacher, a leader, or member of our global community, from our special education or multilingual leaders to our dedicated health and mental health staff. This is what it looks like when our village comes together. This is how a collective team, including parents, families, and community, works to champion a student's personal growth, communication, and learning agility. By fostering independence and inclusion, we ensure that every student, regardless of their unique journey, has the support to confidently walk across that graduation stage and into a full future of possibilities. Thank you to Everett, Ryan, and Jessica for sharing your experience. Thank you for your time tonight, Board. We are proud of the work that we do in the Support Services Department and are grateful for the opportunity to champion each and every student in Wayzata Public Schools. And this concludes our presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Ginny. Thank you all for bringing your experiences, your knowledge, and what you do for the kids at Wayzata. And thank you, Everett, and your parents. It was an honor to meet you, and may the future be bright. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions, good colleagues?
I think we're all very overwhelmed by certainly the quality and quantity of care and service options for Wayzata Public Schools students. And, you know, I reflect back on my time as a student and that multitude of opportunities students have. It is something special, and it is something unique, and to have those students with us today makes things all the more special. So, I'm very appreciative to the team we have joining us today. And I think, you know, we'll go on with our meeting. You will all go on with our lives, but will certainly remember and apply what you taught us and allowed us to learn tonight for as long as we're on the board and as long as we are continuing serving the public. You do a remarkable amount of work in informing us in the work that we do while reminding us of why we're really here. So, from all the opportunities we have to engage with the community, talk to students, talk to teachers, it goes a long way to have occasions like this because you remind us why we're all here, and it is for each and every. So, thank you so much, and we're so grateful for all the work.
I'm not overwhelmed, I'm proud. When we talk about each and every, this is what it means. And we saw it through our recognitions, and then we saw it from the data that came out of our recognitions, and we've seen it through your presentation. Every student gets to show up in our school buildings, being exactly and uniquely and perfectly who they are. And thank you to the team for greeting them for where they are and moving them forward. And thank you to our parents. You trust us every day with your most prized possession, and we know that's not always easy, and it takes bravery and courage and partnership. And we appreciate you, and I appreciate our staff who goes to work that takes that very seriously every day. So, thank you.
So, first of all, Everett and family, again, you make us proud. You are really source of all of our inspiration, so thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge just a quick couple of things. Again, you listed 19 roles on the slide, and reading through those 19 roles, and especially the last slide that shows how the team comes together, it is a really great representation of how you support students. And again, it's just unbelievable. I'm out of words here. Just wanted to make one quick point again.
So, you have been with the district for a long, long time, right? Yes, okay. So, I know I should not be visiting the past during the COVID times, but you said you have 15 health offices, 80,000 visits. How was it during COVID? Can you give us just an idea?
Well, that was such a different time. You know, students were in school and out of school, and, you know, what we did is we just listened to each student, and everybody came to school different, in a different place, whether they kind of wanted to be there, didn't want to be there, weren't worried about being there. So, we just kind of took that individual student and just listened and made it work for them. Our health office visits during those years weren't as busy, because there were fewer students, some of the time there were fewer students, but, and people really were very good about staying home, they heeded the word, and appreciated, and they stayed home and listened. We're kind of in a different place now, everybody were fortunate at Wayzata, people strive to do good things, the students do, and they come to school, maybe not always as healthy as they should, because they just want to get, they just want to take that test, or they just want to do this or that thing, and just they feel the passion to be here to get something done, and they then come into the health office just drained, and you can see they're sick, and like, oh, you shouldn't have come today. Oh, but I needed to. I'm like, no, please stay home, you're sick. But, so how it's, we just see a lot more illness today, probably just generally, as opposed to during, over COVID, it was, people were much more cautious.
More cautious, okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure we learned a lot of lessons. It kind of feels like five years later, our lessons aren't learned as much as they should have been, but here we are, and we'll just take them as they come.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your service now. I just want to make a quick comment about the Trojan Care Closet. Was this students' idea or were that teachers' ideas?
It was a combination of the elementary school last town that started honestly with me and my daughter when they had her elementary school. They're holy buckets, there's a lot here, what do we do with that? And then it went to when the transition students were organizing it and doing their job skills and seeing what could be donated to different organizations in our community than I was, that we had a job site at the early learning school already, and nothing sounded like, could we do something here? So, it was a combo of students, and then I would say like with our work coordinator support too, and then the early learning school.
Okay, great idea, though. Thank you so much. There are no more questions or comments. Thank you again for coming and talking to us about student services tonight. Okay. Okay. Next is the audience opportunity to address the board. Looks like we have one individual that wants to speak. This section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school board. Speakers who wish to provide input to the school board must complete the sign-up sheet and return it to our administrative assistant, Amy, who is sitting to my right. Please note that you will need to complete a request form to be included on the speaker request list. When you are invited to the podium, please identify the subject and/or agenda items to which your comments pertain. Priority will be given to students and families with students currently enrolled in the district. The school board practice is not to engage in a discussion or debate with the speaker, but rather allow the speaker time to express their thoughts. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. This evening, each speaker will be, actually, there is only one speaker, so the speaker will be invited up to the podium to speak for three minutes. Amy will help us keep track of the time by holding up a red card, or Sheila will, okay, at the three-minute mark. Please end your comments when you see the red card. If you have already shared your thoughts with the school board, please consider letting someone else address the board. First, are there any, well, is the one speaker a student? Please come forward. Student advocacy for the school board by Ankeeta Kumar.
Hello, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson, and other administrative professionals. You may have noticed me and my fellow students in the audience of past board meetings and work sessions. Today, I would like to introduce myself and explain why we attend these meetings. My name is Ankeeta Kumar, a rising senior at Wayzata High School, and the founder and executive director of Wayzata School Board Spotlight. Our initiative aims to increase voter turnout and educate the public about the upcoming Wayzata School Board election, as well as advocate for a student representative on the school board. Wayzata School Board Spotlight intends to be a collaboration between the school board and the public. We want to work with you to ensure this community is better informed about your important work. To do this, we attend community civic engagement events and school board meetings in person and virtually via YouTube, creating nonpartisan summaries for our Instagram, Facebook, and soon, our email newsletter. Board member Dan Janestra has advised us throughout this journey so far and ensures our information is accurate to the best of his ability. We are very grateful for his support. In just three weeks, we have gained over 250 Instagram followers and accumulated over 18,000 views on our educational posts. More students and parents are having meaningful conversations about local politics than ever before, and this is only the beginning. In the coming weeks, we'll be conducting student interviews with school board candidates and publishing them on our platforms, giving our community, especially Wayzata High School seniors who can vote, a chance to get to know the candidates better through the student perspective. We are also working with the League of Women Voters on these interviews. I look forward to supporting them at their candidate forum on September 30. Recently, we've heard about a board initiative to have a high school student sit up at the table with you. On behalf of Wayzata School Board Spotlight, I'd like to express our support for student representatives on the school board. We believe that there are many benefits to having a student representative, and I've outlined our findings in the proposal before you. It includes a basic outline of the proposed position, a pros and cons table, and highlights from our research. Please review it at your convenience. At the end of the day, we are just students passionate about helping others learn more about local politics. I want to emphasize that we are on your side, and we want to do everything we can to ensure excellence for each and every student. Thank you for your time, consideration, and for supporting the voices that will shape the future of our schools.
Thank you, Ankeeta. Moving on to administrative reports and recommendations, Dr. Anderson will present Policy 607 for approval of the school calendar. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have Policy 607 tonight, which is titled "School Calendar," and I'll share the following. The policies and regulations were reviewed as part of the regular review cycle and using the Minnesota School Board Association Model Policy by district administration and other district stakeholders where necessary. A final review was completed by the policy committee of the school board. The recommended action is before you relating to Policy 607 titled "School Calendar." And just to offer clarity, that's more related to guidance for how and when the timelines are for the development of the school calendar in lieu of a specific calendar for the board to consider and take action on. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So, the recommended action is to approve the policy as presented in the attachment on board book. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. We have the second reading.
Excuse me, I have a second reading.
Thank you. And somebody has seconded. You seconded, thank you. Is there a discussion? I would just like to thank the policy committee consisting of, let's see if I can get this right, Paras, Valentina, and Sheila for your good work. Again, the motion, the recommended action is to approve the policy as presented in the attachment. This is a roll call vote.
Heidi Kater is absent. Valentina Ayers?
Yes.
Dan Janestra?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Paras Bendey?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Millen Sione?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. There are no teaching and learning, finance and operations, and human resource services reports this evening. I would like to take a moment, he's not here tonight, but to congratulate newly-appointed Director of Finance, Jack Sterns, who was formerly the accountant in the finance department. So, congratulations to Jack, and good luck to him in his new position. All right, there is no board action either tonight, and no board reports, so we jump to the conclusion. The next work, next board work session is on Monday, August 25 at 4:00 PM. This concludes the Wayzata Public Schools' regular board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The time is now 8:09. The Wayzata Public Schools' Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, August 11, 2025 is adjourned.